Well, my son just received friendship award at school this morning. So I was, I had to be in line in school at 9:45 and then I was like, can't really get here, so I'm gonna wait. Yeah. He's young, he's not very rich. But I... My girl did it. She didn't say it was a mistake. Yeah. 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 Okay, get on how you did. Yes, you did. You're probably way here, I was late. Yeah. 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 There's an F C right here. Yeah. 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 Good evening, or good morning. Is that the open, is it open, yes? One, two, three. Hello, whoa, it's not on, it's not on.
Hello, testing, we're gonna go ahead and get started with, you've got a, there's a couple vacant seats up in the front, I see. Like to welcome everybody this morning, and we're gonna have three, three meetings simultaneously, so we'll start off with our council, I'll introduce our council right now, and then turn her over to Bill, that runs the port. Counselors, wave when I say your name, Councilman Hugh Albreth. Okay. Kevin Lloyd, Brenda Kinzer, Jermaine Cornegay, Keith Wagoner, and Rick Limley, and I think we're missing one, Brett Sandstrom. So I'll give the sound to Bill.
Okay, and this microphone works, but you have to talk close to the microphone.
Good morning. We're going to call, each, each entity is gonna call, I'm sorry, each entity is going to, as Mike said, call, call their group to order, and I will begin. I wanted to make a couple comments, but I think those will, I think those will come later, so I'm gonna call the Port of Skagit, I'm gonna, boy, this doesn't work at all.
That work? Got it? Okay.
Port of Skagit's now in session. I'll introduce my cohorts, we've got Steve Umdall, Dr. Kevin Ware, and myself, Bill Schuler, and so, Ken, are you?
Okay, I will call the Board of Skagit County Commissioners to order, it is February 27th, 2015, just after 10:30, and Commissioner Wiesen is here, and before we get started, I need to read a short recusal statement by Lisa Janiky, so this is a quote in her words. "Under RCW 42.23 Code of Ethics for Municipal Officers, Section 070 states, 'No municipal officer may use his or her position to secure special privileges or exemptions for himself, herself, or others. I have no direct or indirect ownership in Janiky Bioenergy, nor does my husband. I recognize the appearance of a conflict of interest is as real as a conflict of interest in fact. I therefore recuse myself from meeting on this issue to avoid a conflict of interest in fact, or in appearance,' and that is from Commissioner Janiky."
Thank you. Okay, we have Peter Janiky, who is the main cog in this whole adventure, so Peter, are you ready to give us a presentation? Peter?
I haven't been here before, I'm not sure whether I'm giving the presentation this direction or behind me. So I actually have someone from my office bringing back a PowerPoint, I didn't realize so many people would be here, so anyway, we're bringing in a PowerPoint. So my vision of this Northern State complex is to create a technology center that would be a place where we could develop new technology, we could research all of these new technologies, and also to work on the manufacturing side of the technology, so it's not just developing it, it's also the robotic welders, the machine tools, the castings, the, you know, all of the really neat stuff that would be required in the manufacturing side. I think most of you are familiar with the first piece of equipment that we want to manufacture is this processor, but we have visions of many, many other pieces of equipment. We're currently under construction, building a really revolutionary new toilet that requires no water in, requires no water out, we think we can build this toilet for about $350, and we think that the market worldwide is about 10 million a year of these toilets, so we just, we think that's actually gonna be a bigger deal than the processor. There's a variant of this processor that we want to build that sequesters carbon, and our current machine only processes about 100, about 25,000 gallons of water a day. We want to build a machine that processes millions of gallons of water a day for cleaning tributaries going into big rivers, so, so we see that as a huge opportunity, I don't want to get into the technical details right now, but the development is huge. On the processor itself, I want to just talk about the business model, just really briefly. So, we built the first machine, it's going to Dakar in Senegal, it should arrive there in about two weeks, we have a crew going there to assemble it, the largest water conference in Africa is gonna be there in May, so we want to have the machine stood up and running for all of these people around Africa to come and see it. We have letters of intent from many, many different countries for additional processors, we think the next processor is either gonna go to Benin, or is gonna go back into Senegal. That processor's being built at our factory right now, Janiky Industries, you could come and see it, so we see that as a, the next step. The third processor, we'll start construction on it in July, and we expect to have, ship it about this time next year. So we're building them now on about a four-month schedule, we'll very quickly move to a two-month schedule, and then a one-month schedule. In 2016, we expect to build eight processors there. They're about $2.5 million, $2 million roughly, sales price, so it kind of gives you a scale of what we're doing there. In 2017, our intention is to build 40 processors. In 2018, we want to build 75 processors, and in the following year, 130, and by year five, we want to be building more than 200 processors here in Skagit County. So you start looking at the growth of that, and we see, you know, it took 21 years to get Janiky Industries to 700 employees, we think we're gonna hit that mark pretty easily within five years or less with this new business. The, the one thing I would like to say is, is that this is a difficult industry, we're going into, we're trying to service the, some of the most corrupt, some of the poorest, some of the most difficult places on the planet, and I expect a difficult battle. So if we think that we're gonna just go into this thing and it's gonna be easy, we should all be, you know, go into this with our eyes wide open, I expect a difficult journey, and our team is prepared for that. And so as we look at the growth plan at the Northern State Hospital Complex, we may stumble along the path, okay? We may not grow that fast, it may take seven years, it may take eight years, it may take 10 years to get there, but we will get there, and when I look back at Janiky Industries and the growth there, I would have thought that it would have happened at least twice as fast as it did, it was way harder than I ever anticipated, and so I'm starting to kind of come to terms with reality, and I think this is gonna be hard too. The difference is, is the scale of the market here is just so tremendous, the number of customers around the world that are so passionately needing of this equipment was way more than we anticipated, so that's our direction. I want to talk just a little bit about the, how I see the Northern State Complex, my vision for that. So, I would like to see it much more open to the public on, on the entrance side, we want to have people be able to come in, I would envision some sort of a cafe, a coffee shop, I haven't figured this out, on, on our side, we want to do a museum of the world, because we're gonna be dealing with people in Brazil, in Mexico, in India, in the Pacific Islands, and we want to have basically a museum set up, so people can see all these different cultures around the world, where our machines are, what they're doing, I would expect it would be a place where people from the community and from outside could come and visit, and so, and then maybe some kind of play fields, or some kind of a, you know, and then we need to incorporate the historic part of the Northern State Complex in that, and so at the Northern State, we have to have some community vision of what do people want? What do we want to restore, and what would it look like, and, and maybe we could do some kind of a museum for the Northern State Complex as well. There's a lot of individuals in the county that have photographs, they have, there's all kinds of things, I actually thought we could video people that actually worked at the Northern State Complex, and in the interpretive center, we could play these videos of people that had worked there for the last 30 or 40 years, I think there's all kinds of neat opportunities there. And then, of course, there's gonna be the Research and Development Manufacturing Center, and that is, parts of that are gonna be, you know, there's gonna be forklifts, and there's gonna be welders, and I can't have small children running around in a manufacturing facility, so in some form or another, we're gonna have to control access into the manufacturing part of it, would obviously give tours and what have you, but there's a safety and a security issue that we have to manage somehow, but I would hope that it would be a much more open campus than we have today. And then, finally, I'm really all about education, and I think there's a tremendous opportunity here for education at all levels. So, first of all, there's gonna be a lot of manufacturing-type jobs, from welding to electrical work, to computer science, to software, but, but the hands-on type work, where you're assembling and building things. There's gonna be a whole engineering component as well, where all these engineers are designing stuff, and then, of course, there's the sales and all of that, so I would hope that we could work very closely with the universities, and maybe there's some opportunity here that, I'm not smart enough to quite figure out, but I see all those big buildings up there, and I see that, it kind of looks like, it kind of smells like a big college campus, so I'm hoping that maybe there's some way that we could have some college classes there, and that they could work closely with what we're doing on the environmental and humanitarian side of this, and there could be some synergy there, and maybe there's some opportunity to restore some of those buildings for use as, in college classes, or something to that I think that's all I have to say.
As you can tell, everyone is excited about this project, it presents a wonderful opportunity for us in many ways. Can you hear me? Well, this isn't gonna help much.
Point it this way.
Tip it up, put it. Directly.
Can you hear me now? Okay. I think this is a great opportunity for the county and particularly Cedar Willy area. One of the things that seems to me like a natural fit, Peter talks about the employees he's gonna have there, Job Corps, as you know, is there, and they're a training institution mainly, and I certainly see a tie in there with, with certain jobs, I'm sure the Job Corps and probably, probably Skagit Valley College would be happy to be involved in that project in some way as far as the training goes, so I think it's really a wonderful thing.
Sure, I want to give a little bit of an overview of what we've worked on, and how the Janiky proposal is fitting into that. Some of you already know that a few years ago, the state surplus, the Northern State property, it was under Governor Gregoire, and at that time, to my knowledge, no private sector interests reached out to say that they were interested, but the city of Cedar Willy did, and the Port of Skagit did. So it started a partnership of trying to look at what we could do to increase economic opportunities for the valley overall, but East County in particular, so we started working together on that, and looked at a couple of opportunities that didn't seem to quite fit, and we started then getting the county involved as a third partner, and how do we do this together? And actually got a grant, and put in our own money from the three entities, and started working on some environmental contamination on the site, and looking at the quality of the buildings on the site, and, and understanding the Olmsted design, and how unique and special that is to this valley. So as we started pulling all those parts together, still a long way to go, expected another roughly year and a half in this process, we came to learn of Peter's proposal, Peter and Susan wanting to develop a research and technology center for all kinds of inventions like that, like he just talked about, and also this manufacturing facility. That's happened very quickly, since the first of the year, we've been trying to, you know, pull all the parts together to see, to explore whether this fits what we've had in mind, and it appears to meet the goals of the three entities in terms of economic improvement to the whole valley, in terms of protecting the historic nature of the site, in terms of protecting the sensitive areas like Hanson Creek, and in terms of respecting the neighboring Upper Skagit Tribe, and then finally, in terms of public access, increasing the ability for individuals to go into the site as they haven't been able to for many years. So we've started working on that with Peter and Susan, and trying to understand how all this fits together, and understood, understand that he anticipates 1,000 good jobs on that site, that's tremendous, that's, that's huge for this whole valley. So that's accelerated our work as a partnership, it's accelerated our work with the state of Washington, Department of Enterprise Services is represented here, and with several members, including the director, Chris Liu, who's been an amazing partner through this process. So we've got a lot of stuff to do in a very short period of time, and when we get to the inter-local agreement, I'll explain more about what that work looks like. Yeah, if we've got the Gates video, I think it would be great for us to show it, so you guys have a little more understanding of what we're working on, and why this is so exciting, not only for us here in the valley, but for us as a region and for the world.
Peter told me the other day that he has had 189 requests from throughout the world for very, very interested in the opportunity to acquire one of these machines, so it is exciting.
Over 2.5 billion people have no access to safe sanitation. We asked brilliant engineers to help us solve this problem, and one of those engineers actually has proposed a solution where the waste is valuable.
The Omni-processor turns sewer sludge, which is kind of nasty, into clean drinking water, electricity, and ash that is pathogen-free. This is where the sludge enters the machine, it goes up this conveyor belt, is fed into these large tubes, we call the dryer, that's where we boil the sludge, and in the boiling process, we separate the water vapor from the solids. The solids are now dry, and we can feed them into the fire. Once we have this very hot fire, we can make high-pressure, high-temperature steam, and we take that steam, and we send it to a steam engine, and the steam engine drives a generator that makes electricity that we use for the processor, and also excess electricity that can be delivered back to the community. The water vapor that's created in the boiling process is run through a cleaning system until we have the cleanest, purest water you can possibly imagine.
The sanitation system, as we know it in the developed world, cannot work in developing countries, so what we need in developing countries is a very simple system.
The entrepreneur that owns this processor will get paid for the input, the sludge, and that same entrepreneur will get paid for the outputs, the electricity, the water, and the ash.
I am very impressed with this solution we're seeing here, it generates electricity, it generates clean water.
It will grow to every corner of the earth that needs it, because it makes money every day.
It's water.
Okay, we're gonna accept public comments, since there's so many of you out there, we're gonna ask you to limit them no more than two minutes, so anybody that wishes to speak, just come on up.
You've got a sign-in sheet, though. Oh, hey, all right, okay. That work? My name is Dick Nord, I live at 107 South Third La Conner, and I've been privileged to have been involved with this, this, not necessarily this group, but the group that's been working on the Northern State property, that would be the state, and the city, and the county, and the port, for the last couple of years, and have fortunately been able to attend some of those meetings as a private citizen, and I've appreciated that very much. I, I'm truly excited, it was, from some of the first meetings we had, it was pointed out by many of the people that attended that this was kind of a moment made in time, it was a magic moment, because the, everyone came together. One of the county council people said, isn't this a wonderful moment, we've got the county, the city, and the port, all working together, along with some private citizens, and that doesn't happen that often, and that was truly amazing for the, everybody involved, and of course, the state became involved too. I think that what's happened with the Janiky proposal is that that magic moment in time has just taken a dramatic leap forward, because all of a sudden, we have this wonderful site, we have a group of community members that are working together for a common goal, and we have a product now that is absolutely noble in its, in its cause, and it can help so many people around the world, and it provides some opportunities for our own community that are incredibly dramatic, if you can think about, I was a chairman of the Workforce Board for three years, and I understand the importance of jobs in this community, and the number of jobs that this will bring to this community isn't 1,000 that Mr. Janiky's proposing, but it's all of the supplemental jobs and the other businesses that will move in here to support that. So we've got a tremendous opportunity at our fingertips, and I would urge you, all of you people, to continue to work together, and, and actually boost the speed, and make it work better. There's some opportunities that I'm sure you've thought of that might provide some tax relief to Janikys and some other people that may want to come in, if they can perform and put together a technical school in that location, it doesn't necessarily have to just service the engineering or the Janiky proposal, it can help the local community through agriculture and other potential technology resources. So I hope you consider all that, I hope you look at all of the possibilities, the historical building possibilities that can save this, this program money, the potential for economic zones and tax advantages that different businesses might have that can come into this community, and, and use everything at our, at our disposal to, to turn that property into the, the showplace that we know it can become, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dick. Gary Jones.
I am an attorney, but I'm here as a citizen who's been paying taxes to the Port of Skagit County, and gas taxes and all that sort of thing, and thinking as a student, partly in my capacity as an attorney, about land use matters, and advising people about what happens, you know, to their property, what happens when somebody comes forward with a proposal, and I'd have to say that what I'm hearing sounds a whole lot like the iron law of zoning, which is something that was coined by a man in Vermont who was serving on the planning council of a 230-person community, who said, and was quoted in Dixon's book called The Rules of the Game, as saying that zoning works just fine when you don't need it, but when you do need it, it doesn't work at all. And from my perception, as somebody who's tracked Bayview Ridge and the port's activity up there, trying to get in position to accept an industrial proposal, it seems to me that that is very logical as a site, and while I understand the excitement and the very genuine kind of genius that's been involved in bringing about this opportunity, I think as a member of the community who's taken an interest in land use planning, and has kind of thought for 50 years that, first under the Planning Enabling Act, and now under the Growth Management Act, that we would be planning for something like this so that it would go where the citizens had previously identified it, I think this is a tremendous departure.
Thanks, Gary. Any, what's her last name? Swingy.
Can you quit me? No.
She doesn't want to talk? Okay, we got Louis Requa.
Thirty seconds. You always do that to me. Louis Requa, 310 West Bennett, Cedar Willy. This is an exciting time in my life, I've been involved with Northern State Properties since 1976, when I was a compliance officer for DNR, and in the ensuing years since then, I've, I've done a lot of things that have made attempts to do something, not only with just the campus area, but also with the parkland. I have a son that's been working for Janiky Industries for about 17 years now, I know what they can do, I'm excited that this is, that this is something that they're proposing, especially for this site. I was lucky enough to become a member of Dick Nord's little focus group, I won't name any other names, but we, we decided a couple years ago that we wanted to see if we could get some real interest going in this, and with the help of a lot of other people, it's beginning to happen, and what I want to say is, this could put Skagit County, or will put Skagit County, on the world map. It's, it's, it's amazing what, what this will accomplish worldwide, and I think we all need to be a part of it, so the positive process needs to continue, thank you all. Thanks, Louis.
Okay, Jolene Bettendorf, does that pronounce that correctly?
Yes, thank you, do I understand, I get a 30-second wave-off? Okay. Okay. My name's Jolene Bettendorf, I live in Mount Vernon at the moment, I am from Cedar Willy. I love having opinions, I wish I could have, say, tell you what I think everybody should do here, but mostly what I have are questions, I have a whole list of them, I'm going to give you as much as I can in one minute and I'm going to give you as much as I can in 1 minute and 30 seconds. These are my questions, starting with the kinds of jobs. What kinds of jobs and at what pay levels for how many people? Mr. Janicki answered some of these questions, but not to my satisfaction, but thank you for trying. Are local residents, the kind of people who are unemployed now, are they prepared to take these jobs? Or are we considering that technicians will have to be brought in to take these jobs? Is this really going to help unemployment as it exists now? Are these permanent, or are they temporary construction jobs? Secondly, where on the campus will this be located? I am unclear about that. I picked up a map today as I came in. I still don't quite understand where it's going to be. Has the vacant land between Highway 20 and the edge of the campus been considered for this place, for this factory, so that it doesn't have to be built on the old hospital grounds? How much land will it take to build this factory and to accommodate everything that has to support it, including parking and road expansion? And what changes, development improvements, will be required in the infrastructure as it stands now? And who will pay for that? And how much will traffic increase? What is the status of the cleanup study that was done with the ecology grant? Who will pay for the cleanup? Will a factory require rezoning? And if so, will that mean other manufacturers can build their factories here? How will this affect the businesses and services already here? Will they have to close? Will this change the entire structure of the system? Sorry? Really? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I was, I didn't see it. Okay. Okay. Well, at least I have 20 seconds left, right? My only opinion is, my only real opinion is, that isn't the end of my questions, is that this is an absolutely wonderful thing that he is doing. It needs to be built someplace. I'm really, really uncertain that I would, that I want it built here. Thank you.
Thank you. Your questions are, did you note all our questions?
If we can have a copy of your questions.
Yeah, maybe, that would be great.
Yes.
We certainly don't have time to respond today, but...
Aye.
We will take questions within the comments. We probably won't respond today, but at least they'll be there, and we know people want to know that. And we want to know a lot of it ourselves. We have a lot of due diligence to do, and there's a lot of questions that are completely unanswered that the partnership is going to be working on in the next several months. Okay, let's see, we got Steve, is that Osher? Who is he? Oh, Steve, okay.
My name is Steve Osher. I live in Clear Lake, and the lady that was before me answered, asked almost all the questions that I was going to ask, so I got some time I can yield to somebody else. Two things that I haven't heard addressed enough yet are the tenants that are there now, other than Job Corps, specifically Pioneer Center and RSN, which are services that we vitally need in this county, and yet the port has said that don't fit into the campus plan. I'd like to hear everybody's input on what's going to happen to them, and how we can keep them and all the jobs that are involved with them in this county. Because if we get 1,000 jobs and we lose 300, that's only 700 jobs.
Mike Crawford.
My name is Mike Crawford. I live at 4435 Aggett Road in Anacortes. Ladies and gentlemen, I think with your position, and you realize that literally the lifeblood of an area is its economy. And I'll tell you, I've been in business in this valley for over 50 years, and we've struggled with that part of it. And I think this is such an opportunity. I can remember when Don Wick first came on the E-DAS board, on E-DAS as an exec, and I was on the board at the time, we struggled to find people that would support economic development. We would go to these councils, we would go to the commissioners, we went to everybody, and what we would talk about is the Little League story. And that is, it is extremely difficult to have people volunteer and do work in the community for Little League coaching, being on the council, you name it, unless they have a job, unless they have something to do. And this is so unique and such, I think, a great opportunity. If we would pass this up or screw this up, we all should be tainted for that, because I think it is one of these things that only is going to come along once in our lifetime. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you very much. Okay. We've got Annie, Connie, excuse me, Connie Holda, is it, from Cascade Job Corps?
I'm here, but I don't have a microphone.
Okay. Okay, how about Tony Splain? Is Tony here?
You mean to say you have nothing to comment about?
Sally. Sally.
We can't raise taxes. Tony Splain, 714 Sapp Road, Cedar Woolley. I spent most of my working years in third-world nations, Philippines, Indonesia, New Guinea, Irianjaya. And the problem with sewage and water in all these countries exists. I mean, it's a real problem. If these machines are successful, I can see where it's going to help millions of people in this world to at least get decent drinking water and some electricity. For example, one timber company I was attached to for a while, we drilled our water wells 175 feet deep, and the water was still not potable. In fact, they recommended we not even take a bath in it. The pollution is that bad in the third-world countries. And I believe this machine will solve a lot of that. And I believe every effort should be made to bring this whole program forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Sally Holden, Holden?
I think it says no.
Is Sally here?
She said no.
Okay. Mike, Mike Condler, I can't quite, D, is that a D? D look. If Mike knows who I'm, if Mike signed up. Oh, no, okay. I guess that, does anybody else want to make a quick comment? Come on up.
I'm Mary Ann, ma'am Bill Ales, and I'm a land use planner at Skagit Surveyors and Engineers. And I have had the great pleasure of working on the Northern State property for many, many years. I was involved with the charat that happened up there, it's been years and years ago, for planning the use of the entire property. It was, and it was, it was a really exciting and fun thing to be a part of and to see all the people in the community that came together for that. And it was really disappointing to see that it just stalled out and that nothing happened after that. And so I, too, was part of Dick Nord's little group of people that wanted to see something happen at Northern State that was, that was local, and that, you know, that we all, that we could all be proud of, and that would be a benefit to our community. You know, how many times in your life are you going to get a chance to say, "We were part of something that changed our world"? That's really where we're at. And if we don't take this opportunity, we will never, ever have an opportunity like this again. I've heard people be concerned about the zoning. You know, zoning and the planning process, that is something that is intended to be part of the community. We have so many tools and techniques that are in place to allow for planned communities and planned, planned, all kinds of different things, with mixed zoning, mixed uses, performance zoning, all kinds of stuff. I think that that is a, that that is just a, that's something that we can work through, and I'm really excited about this, and I really encourage you to move forward with this, and let's see this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Elizabeth Fernando. I have Simply Silver and More downtown Cedar Woolley. Everybody has talked about the opportunity for the county and for the city. And, you know, in my shop, every day people come in, well, it's not every day anymore, it's every week, people come in and they tell me what we used to have downtown. We used to have three shoe stores, we used to have J.C. Penney's, we used to have, used to have, used to have. With this plan, it's not what we used to have, this is what we can become. This will be a Cedar Woolley that will be what we decide. The growth is there, and the shops will fill up again. They always talk about how many empty buildings we have downtown. The buildings will fill up. The spillover from this is not just in jobs for this. This is going to create our community again. And these are people who have shown what a community-oriented family they are, and I can't think of anything negative to say about it. It's world-changing, and it's a community-changing, and I think it's a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Paula.
You always want to say Paula. I'm Paula Kelly. I live at 407 State Street here in Cedar Woolley. I am also the executive director of the Cedar Woolley Chamber of Commerce. And the Chamber of Commerce has been supporting change at Northern State for many years now. We believe that what we lost in the '70s can be regained if we start looking at the potential of this project. I think about how, what Elizabeth was saying about the things that were here, and, you know, we used to have Skagit Steel, and we used to have Mills, and we used to have the Northern State campus that had many jobs. Those things can be replaced. They can be growth here. And we need it. We need those kind of jobs. Someone else asked about what kind of jobs? There's going to be a lot of different kinds of jobs. Everything from more baristas at the coffee shops, up to the highly technical jobs that the, they need to do the engineering and to do the computer programming. But one of the other things that struck me is a year and a half ago, I went to China, and I stayed in a hotel. It was a beautiful hotel. It was a five-star hotel. And right there in the bathroom, it said, "Do not drink the water." And I thought, if Peter's machine had been in the bottom of that hotel, that 50-story hotel, processing the waste and putting that waste back into energy and clean water, I could have drank the water. Thank you.
Did you drink wine instead?
They don't have good wine in China.
Okay, any more comments? We have to cut this off.
Good morning. My name is Laura Caillou, and I live at 15730 Cam Road in Mount Vernon. And I'm here today on behalf of Dr. Thomas Keegan, the president of Skagit Valley College. I am the dean of workforce education at Skagit Valley College. And he sends his apologies for not being able to be in attendance, but is out of town, but is very excited about the opportunities for increased educational and training development in Skagit County that this project presents. We've had the good fortune of being able to develop a manufacturing, engineering technician program at Skagit Valley College with the support and input from Janicki Industries. We also have computer information systems, welding, many technical programs that directly relate to this kind of economic development. And we see this particular project as one where we can continue to grow the quality of these programs, because we'll be, have local industry that's really doing cutting-edge kind of work. We'll have more job opportunities, more internship opportunities. And we also have the beginnings of articulation agreements from these programs to Washington State University's Everett Center, so clear pathways for local people to get technical training, four-year degree training, and have jobs at the end of it. So we're just very, very supportive and excited about this opportunity.
Thank you. Take a couple more questions.
My name is Andrea Exaver. I live at 19814 State Route 9, Mount Vernon. First, I'd like to say that I do support Mr. Janicki's Omni-processor proposal and the things that could potentially go along with that. But I would also like to ask a question of, and it was brought up briefly by Mr. Osher, and that is, my concern would be, what about the disadvantaged that used to be at Northern State Hospital? Those who are mentally ill, who have addictions, whatever the case, that have no help in this world? About over 20 years ago, there was a report that said, in the United States, there were 195,000 mentally ill people. If you just took those numbers, or not in the United States, but in Washington, and if you took that number and divided it by 39 counties, and true, there's more people in some county and less in others, but if you just took the numbers, that would mean 22 years ago roughly, there were 5,000 mentally ill people in Skagit County. And down through time, I've heard about the 16 beds that would be set aside for the people who could really use help and so on. 16 beds versus 5,000, somebody needs to do some research. I went online the other day, and it said that Washington State has the highest ratio, or the highest population, rather, of mentally ill people in the United States. I would like to see some answers from somebody, some in-depth research, some comprehensive discussion among all the various entities in this room, and whoever else that might come together with a viable plan that would be out there to help these people.
Thank you. One more.
Good morning. My name is Rose Ness. I'm the program director at Pioneer Center North. We're currently on the Northern State Hospital campus. I would like all the parties involved to consider collaborating with Pioneer Center North and the RSN that is currently on the campus. We have, I believe there's a great opportunity for Janicki Industries to provide sheltered workshops for the residents. They need job training, it's good for their recovery, it increases their prognosis of going out into the community and staying clean and sober, becoming productive, tax-paying citizens. I also want to just let everybody know that Pioneer Center North also works very closely and collaboratively with Skagit Valley College Human Services Program. And we also consider ourselves a training program, providing the on-the-job training and hours needed for individuals to become chemical dependency professionals, who at current time, there happens to be a shortage of them, and we don't foresee that getting any better. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public comment period's closed. Let's move on to the inter-local agreement between the partners that we've been working on. So Passy, do you want to deal with that?
The parties entered into an inter-local agreement at the beginning of this collaborative process that focused on analyzing the contamination on the site and then planning for next steps, and also attempting to find out what would be the highest and best use of the site as best we were able. That inter-local agreement has been amended to bring us to where we currently are today and help us to move forward. It includes in this inter-local agreement the highest and best uses for the historic area, which would be research and development and education, specialty housing, and hospitality sorts of uses. It also includes in here an agreement of the parties of how we will fund the next steps. That funding includes $25,000 from the City of Cedar Woolley, plus $25,000 of in-kind work, in that they've hired a planner to help walk through the permitting and annexation process. It includes $75,000 from Skagit County, to partner, includes $100,000 from the Port of Skagit. It includes $212,500 from the State of Washington Department of Commerce, in the form of a grant that will go to Skagit County and then pass through to the port, since the port technically is not eligible specifically for those dollars, but it would come to us as a project. is not eligible specifically for those dollars, but it would come to us as a project team. And it includes $100,000 from Janicki Bioenergy, Peter and Susan Janicki, to help us work through all of the details we need to, basically through the next several months, but certainly by the end of the year. For the electeds, I would like you to know that the inter-local agreement you have before you is a bit different than the one that you received previously from your staff earlier in the week. It's been updated with some comments from the legal team at Skagit County. I view the additions to be non-substantive. I think that most of them have to do with being clear that the port is acting as administrator, and that we anticipate the transition of state control of the property over time would go directly to the port. At one time, we had considered it to be a public development authority. As quickly as we need to move, that would slow us down and not be workable. However, if the port gains control of the property, we view this as a continuing partnership in that we will work together on how Northern State goes forward. So those are the highlights of the changes. Tim, I don't know if you have anything else you would want to mention?
So this is an amended inter-local?
This is amended inter-local. Previously, we have certain components that protect the environment, the illuofan, historic status, public access. This document will be made available. I would hope that this document and we could answer your questions and have more information on our website. So even though we can't answer your questions today, I would hope we'll put all the information on the website. But other than that, I think it's relatively the same.
I'd just like to thank our partners with support and the county both. A lot of work went into getting this set up and the timeframe that we need to get it set up in. And for our city council, I think it's important for you to know that while this inter-local agreement contemplates a particular development, there is a whole separate process that we'll engage in in the future, the planning process that engages all of the public, sort of addresses the Gary Jones question about how zoning works, how annexation works, how permitting ultimately works. This doesn't jump ahead of any of that. This really deals with how the three entities are working jointly to master plan the redevelopment of Northern State. The city, separate from this agreement and its regulatory capacity, will also be dealing with the actual permitting process. So I just want to be clear that there are two distinct processes, and this is only our partnership. It's not the regulatory scheme.
One other comment I guess I want to address. I know we can't answer all of the questions today, and we will take these questions and work on them. But I do want to say that we are trying to facilitate and coordinate a work on what happens next with Pioneer and with RSN facility. We are mindful of that. We understand it's in need of the community. So we have engaged some other folks that may have some resources to help us. So just want to say that.
Thanks, Passy. We are going to ask each entity to, I'm assuming everyone has read this in our local agreement. I know, I think it's pretty good. But I'm assuming all of you read it. If you haven't, you'll have to be a fast reader. Oh, by the way, I've been remiss. Dr. Ware has to leave here by 11:15, so we would like to get action items done before he leaves. Thank you. Passy, are you going to? Yeah, we'll open, the port will open our discussion on the inter-local agreement and pass a motion, hopefully. Any comments from you, Dr. Ware?
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the resolution as presented. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Passed.
Yeah, I think just one thing I want to say. Why is the county so excited? This is probably the biggest thing that's happened in our community in probably the last 50 or 60 years. And the East County has seen a lot of disappointments from the time of Northern State closing, losing hundreds of jobs, the mills closing, the cement plant closing. So we are extremely excited about this process. You know, when you start saving people's lives, which is what that clean water is going to do, that's a big deal worldwide. When you start helping our people, where we have 70% of our kids on subsidized school lunches, be able to have family wage jobs, that's a big deal. And I hope that we will move this process forward as quickly as possible. A lot of times, people want us to operate like a ski boat, but unfortunately, government moves like a tugboat. But I can guarantee, as far as my personal position's going to be, I think lives and people's economic will be, and takes precedence for me, over a slow process. So we're going to do everything possible to move this thing forward and get people back to work in this community.
So with that, I'd move that Skagit County approved the inter-local agreement regarding Northern State property?
I'll second the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. The motion carries.
I just want to thank everybody for attending today and commenting. And I think we might have to have a city council meeting during the day with the attendance we have. At this time, I'll entertain a motion from someone on the council to amend the inter-local agreement regarding Northern State.
I'll make a motion to that the city council adopt the amended inter-local agreement regarding Northern State.
Okay. There's been a motion by Councilmember Loy and a second by Councilmember Galbraith to approve the amended inter-local agreement regarding Northern State. Any further discussion? Councilman Wagner?
Yes. Passy said there were no substantive changes. Has this document been altered from what we got last night? Is that correct? So I would like to hear our city attorney tell me that there's no substantive changes since I can't read and pass.
You pass it, then you get to know.
There are some of the changes that you're going to see are rightfully another much legal, but at least from my perspective, so I wouldn't say they're not substantive, but they don't change the mission or the intent or the partnership.
And our city attorney?
Yeah.
Kevin?
I just want to make the statement that originally, what we started out to do by creating an entity of the city, county, and port to operate this thing, I was against that. Now that the port's going to do it, that's the way it should be. That's what they do. And now I'm all in support of it.
Okay. Jermaine?
I just wanted to say that I would hope that Peter Janicki and Janicki Industries will keep us involved with the entire process and even as far as saying goodbye to the buildings that cannot be salvaged. I mean, we need to be a part of that process, if anything, for our closure.
Good. Okay. All those in favor say aye. Against? Passed unanimously. And I just want to acknowledge that the Mayor of Hamilton, Cromley, is here, and then the Mayor of Concrete is here, Miller. And I thought I saw Councilmember Reagan from Mount Vernon here, and if I missed someone, I'm sorry.
I thought I heard you earlier say that you had a PowerPoint presentation that wasn't ready. Is he going to get a chance to present that? And did you want?
I'm sure he will.
If there's interest. I think it would be very valuable, so if people were in here today.
Why is it if we can do that? Can I ask you a question? Or do we have to? Oh, we left. Oh, okay. So then it doesn't matter. Yeah, timing's good. Whatever you want to hear would be fine. We can set it up.
So you want to do annexation, or you want to do the PowerPoint? Okay.
Okay. One of the things that's got to be done to make this work is annexation of the property in Cedar Woolley, so I'm going to let Passy and Aaron talk about that.
One of the things, as Commissioner Shor just said, is that we need to petition the state to have the property annexed into the city limits of Cedar Woolley. The state is working on understanding how that authority will work and is trying to help us get through that process. So perhaps we should have Dana walk through how annexation will work.
This is a direct petition method through the state's process of annexation. And it will begin with the state submitting a petition to the City of Cedar Woolley. So the annexation is necessary for the property to be brought into the city limits so that the things that were being talked about today, the goals and the vision, can actually happen. This is somewhat of a 12-step process, and there is a lot of opportunity for public process, or public involvement, rather. It is directly following the state law, so those are steps that we need to follow to make sure that we do it correctly, and it's accepted. This is typically about a three-to-four-month process, if it goes straight, without any issues or concerns. So we anticipate starting that very soon, and wrapping it up again within three to four months. And we will post this process on the city's website so people can follow it and understand it. And of course, anybody who would like to be a party of record, please provide your name and address, and we'll make sure that you get notice of the meetings. Otherwise, anybody within 500 feet of the boundaries of the site will be notified of the meetings and invited to participate. Thank you.
We need to have some discussion on a memorandum of intent, on a lease agreement with the state. So Passy?
We don't need to? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we really need to have, each entity must vote on the annexation. So.
So what we're asking for today is really, the three entities in partnership are making a request to the State of Washington Enterprise Services to begin the process of annexation. So all we're doing is really asking for a vote on the letter that's on your desk that is directed to Chris Liu, and requests that DES begin that process with the city. They have been very, very receptive to our partnership in this interim period, and I think appreciate hearing from the partners together as we make these requests. So the requested action is a motion to authorize the letter, the joint letter, to DES requesting that the state begin the process of annexation.
And just one little note. The letter is actually to the state because we're not sure DES is the proper entity that has to start it. So the letter says that we respectfully request the state entity with appropriate authority. So just so you know. Okay? All right. So now we need a vote.
Yeah. Guess we'll, Steve, you ready to make a motion on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that we accept the letter of annexation from North Cascade Gateway Center.
And I second that. Passed. We don't have any made decisions.
On behalf of the county, Commissioner?
I move that we accept the letter from the Port of Skagit County to the annexation for the North Cascade Gateway Center.
And I'll second the motion.
Just to be clear on this, this is the 225 acres. It is the core buildings. The county-owned 676 acres on the outside of that area is still going to be used for the public recreational purposes, so it's not including that in the letter. So just everybody's understanding, it's just the buildings in the 225 acres that we're talking about.
And also, this needs to be done in order to expedite things and keep them moving quickly. So it's been moved and seconded to approve this letter to go in regard to the annexation of North Cascade's Gateway Center. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. Now Passy's going to talk. Pardon me? Oh, they.
Last, last but not least. Okay. I need a motion from someone on our council to do the same thing.
I move to approve your signature of the annexation of North Cascade Gateway Center letter.
Okay. We got a motion by Councilwoman Wagner, and seconded by Councilmember Cornigay to approve the mayor's signature to the letter to DES regarding the annexation. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Against? Passed unanimously. Okay. Thank you.
Now we can ask Passy to give us some information on the memorandum of intent with the state.
Okay. Some of the next steps that we're going to take as a group is we're going to spend time, we've already started that process, with the State of Washington, to understand how we can transition from state control of the property to local control. Specifically, how we can get the Janicki project started, but also what does that look like over time? And how does, can we look at this from a parcel-by-parcel basis? Or is it going to be a big chunk? We just don't know yet. So we need to figure that out. There needs to be appraisals. There need to be economic impact analysis, so we understand what all of that means. There needs to be continued work on the contamination. I heard one of the speakers want to know about that. We know that there is some there. We need to continue to do what's called a, it's RIFs, I got to think about what they're called, Remedial Investigation Feasibility Study, which is the next step. So we need to get through that. We also need to understand what's happening and will happen with the public employees out there. They've been the ones that have been there every day, keeping this place running for the last 40 years. So what happens then? There are the sensitive natural areas that Tim talked about with Hanson Creek. There's also a stack out there with Voces Swifts, which is really unusual and unique. There's the neighboring Upper Skagit Tribe. There are many pieces that we have to pull together here. And so we'll be working over the next several months diligently, trying to get all these pieces put together. With that, I think it'd be nice to see the PowerPoint from Peter.
Can I say a couple things? So my wife, Susan, is sitting over here, and I just wanted to tell everyone, thank you very much for your support. Susan and I always want to make Cedar Woolley just this really great place. And when I was little, I remember going through the Skagit complex. And, you know, I look at it now, and it's, I think it's kind of sad. I look at where the old Cedar Woolley lumber mill was. And so I'm very passionate about trying to make Skagit County and Cedar Woolley just this really awesome place. And I think we have an opportunity to lay the foundation for something that's going to live way beyond me, way beyond my wife. And so, anyway, just thank you so much.
Almost there. We don't have the latest technology and IT infrastructure.
I don't know who meant to comment about the Job Corps, but I think there's really a great opportunity there to have some synergy between Job Corps and, you know, other training and rehabilitation organizations. There's going to be a lot of blue-collar jobs at every level, and I think that, I just don't see why we couldn't make something like that work at that site in some form or fashion or another. You know, my background is engineering. I don't know how to do all the political stuff, but I'm hoping that other people can help me work through that. So some of you have seen this presentation before. Do I get to have a clicker? Okay. Let's go to the next slide, then. Oh, this is the, this is the presentation I actually gave at Edask. Is there another one on that presentation? Both of these are actually, I kind of like this one, is working together, working against each other. I kind of like this one, it's working together, working against each other. So I thought this was an amazing photograph. My son Stanley took this in India last year about this time, outside, right through the window of our car as we were traveling through India, and what we saw when we went there was, you know, we'd have a lot of people come up to us, and they would want money, but a lot of these women would come up to us, and they would want our water bottle, because, you know, it's hot, it's like ninety degrees, we're all carrying water bottles, me, I had my five boys and Suzie with me, and they would, that's what they wanted, the water bottle, and the women there called the water bottle Miracle Water, because when their children would get so sick that they were near death, they would put them on bottled water. And then as soon as the kids got better, and they were no longer in fear of dying, then they would put them back on the pathogen-ridden water that made them sick in the first place. Let's go to the next slide. So this is a picture that Suzie and I took in Kabara, in the slums of Nairobi, and there's about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people that live in that slum, in an area that's only about two-hundred acres. So it's just this phenomenal concentration of people, and they have these tanks, and they fill up with just everything you can imagine. That particular one there smelled so bad that you're, at two-hundred feet away, your eyes would just water from how bad this smelled, it was just awful, and this is just kind of what they're living in. Let's go to the next slide. So these are where they've pumped, in other facilities, they actually pump these things out. There in Nairobi, they can't pump that, because you can't get a pump truck into that site, so they dig that out by hand, they put it in garbage cans, they put it in the back of Toyota pickups, they take it to the Nairobi River, and they dump it, every single day. Two-point-five million people dumping their sewer sludge in the Nairobi River every day. And it's not just in Nairobi, we saw that in Abidjan, we saw that in South Africa, we saw that everywhere. This particular site here is the official dumping site, I can't remember which city that was in. Anyway, this is the official dumping site, and there's just a pipe that goes to the river, and there's a hundred trucks a day that dump there. And then, of course, when you go downstream, go to the next slide, this is what you see downstream, and these people are living in this. And we all know this, because if you go to any of these places, the first thing they tell you, "Don't drink the water," right? Well, you want to know why? Because it's just completely full of human pathogens. The other thing is, the one in the upper left-hand corner is how they get rid of their garbage. They just fill that canal, everyone throws their plastic and paper garbage into that canal, and then they wait for rain. When the rain comes, it all goes out into the bay. So all of that plastic is getting into the ocean, and once it gets into the ocean, it just floats and floats and floats, and the damage it does to the marine environment is staggering. Let's go to the next slide. So this one here, you can actually see all of this in one picture there, so you can see the blue truck there in the upper left, it's the same blue truck in the upper right, where you can see that sludge going down. There's just a couple of concrete tanks, and then you can see that village in the far back in the lower left-hand corner, there's thousands of people that live there in that village. Go to the next slide. And here, you can see the pipe just going out into the ocean, okay? And all that's washing back up, that's me standing there, and you can see all of that debris that's washed back up on the ocean. And so I sat there, and I looked at this thing, and I thought, oh my goodness, you know, this was kind of my point of despair. I thought, how in the world can you solve this problem on this kind of immense scale? And I knew that it had to work financially. There was just, if it didn't work financially, as soon as the donors stopped donating, the problem would stop working. So I said, where can I get enough money to make this work? So I looked at the sludge itself, and it was costing those guys money to truck that sludge. So if I could intercept that line and have them truck a lesser distance, then I could collect a fee for taking the sludge. And then when I looked in the sludge, I said, okay, what's in this sludge? Well, there's actually two things. There's biomass, and there's water. The biomass has a lot of energy in it, and the water has a lot of value. So if I can extract those two things from each other, take the energy from the biomass to drive the process, and take the water and sell it, then I have something. So that's what I created. Let's go to the next slide. So I started working on the math a little bit, and it turns out that two-hundred grams of solids has enough energy, one-point-eight times as much energy, as necessary to boil eight-hundred grams of water. So you can actually boil the water with the solids that are in it. And let's go to the next slide, I don't know if I remove this. So this is, I don't want to get into too much detail here, but through a very clever thermodynamic trick of using the steam off of the first dryer to drive the second dryer, you can actually double the efficiency of that, and you can get to where you have only ten percent solids in water, and you still have enough energy to boil everything. Let's go to the next slide. So here's a picture of the machine, this is the first machine that we built, and I think you saw it in the video, it's on a truck right now, going across the United States, or maybe it's gotten on a boat headed to Dakar, and the second machine will be up and running in Cedar Woolley in July. So this is kind of how it works. It's a steam power plant, it's a solid fuel combustor, and it's a water treatment plant all rolled together. Next. Flip to the next slide. So there was a lot of really technology things that we had to develop, the steam engine, the sludge dryer, and the boiler, that were pretty revolutionary. Let's go to the next slide. So this is something I think is really cool, because I always wanted to do a steam engine, I needed to have an excuse to do a steam engine. And I actually figured out that it made sense. So if you look at the turbine there, I got a bid from Siemens for a turbine, one-hundred-and-fifty KW turbine, five-hundred thousand bucks. And remember, we're trying to sell the whole power plant for two million dollars, and I can't have a half a million dollar component, that's just never going to work. So we actually took a Cummins inline-six-cylinder diesel and turned it into a two-stroke steam engine. We rebuilt all the valves, it's something I'm really proud of, and it's about four times more efficient in this size range than that turbine, which is really cool, and we can build that thing, we think, in production at about thirty thousand dollars. So imagine mass-producing these engines in Cedar Woolley, how cool would that be? Okay, that would just be really awesome. We already bought a really nice five-axis milling machine at Janiky Industries to machine the first ones, but as we get into production, we're going to have to cast them, we're going to, I mean, it's just going to be a huge assembly line. Imagine building four or five of those every single day. Let's go to the next slide. This is a picture of the valve train, and actually, it's evolved a lot since then. We built that valve train, we have a new valve train where we actually lift the valves, we have some really special... Go to the next slide. The rock, if anyone that's familiar with valving events, you look at that little tiny valve event there, you can see it in the, it's about two o'clock, that doesn't look anything like an internal combustion engine. It's a very fast valve event, we open and close that valve in about five milliseconds. Okay, go to the next slide. And then, of course, the dryers, we looked at commercial sludge dryers, and they were all multi-millions of dollars. We built the first one for about seventy-five thousand dollars at Janiky Industries. The next one is already done and in testing, and we believe we can build those in production for about a hundred-and-fifty thousand bucks. So it's just an awesome, and you can see how we've really, what we learned is how much, how we need to process more water. So the reason the dryers got so much bigger from V1 to V2 is because we need to process a lot more water. Go to the next slide. You can just skip this, this is a high-pressure dryer. So there's the boiler, and it's just, you know, it's kind of like Sierra Pacific's boiler, but only, you know, honey, I shrunk the kids, I mean, this thing's... So, next. This is the water treatment system, I actually gave this presentation to Bill Gates right before he drank the water, I had to convince him that the water would be good. And killing the pathogens with steam is like really easy to do, but making it absolutely odor-free was really the technical challenge, and we were able to do that, and we hit this water with about twelve different things, and so by the time you get done, it truly is the best water you'll ever see. We took the water, actually took it off-site, and we took bottled water of multiple different, whatever we could buy at the store, and we had people try to figure out which one was our water, and nobody could tell the difference. It's that good. Let's go to the next slide. And here's the actual treatment test, we tested it more than a hundred times. Let's go to the next slide. And you just kind of see the scale of the machine, next slide, specifications, you know, really the big numbers, the one at the bottom, a hundred to two-hundred thousand people we would serve with one of these machines. Next. And there's kind of a, kind of what it looks like, the new version-two machine, and you'll see it coming to life as you drive by our shop over the next couple of months. The boiler's done, the dryer's done, the team is engineering a lot of the other components. Yeah. The neat thing about these is they're all going to be run by video and remote control, so we're going to have a command and control center, hopefully at the Northern State complex, that looks like, you know, Houston's NASA center, where we're running all of these machines from all over the world. The people that run them do not have to be engineers, they can just be a mechanic that comes in there, and we do everything, we turn them on, we turn them off, we control everything, there's closed circuit video cameras everywhere, inside the boiler, we can actually look down inside the fire, back down inside the dryer, and all of that stuff is real-time feeding back to our facility. Next. This is the kind of thing that we were talking about, is mass production. We want, this is what we want to perfect at Northern State, so that we can put this in other facilities also around the world, because we simply won't be able to manufacture the sheer volume that we're doing only here. A lot of these countries are going to require that we do some manufacturing at their facilities, but we're going to control the manufacturing process. So we'll engineer it here, we'll design it, all of the intelligence is going to happen from here, and then we're going to put it around the world. Next. That's just kind of what it would look like in Dakar, go to the next slide. And this is kind of the most important part of it, we think that this is massively disruptive, okay? The fact that you can take sewer sludge and turn it into money, we don't believe has been done before, and that's why we just think that it's huge. Next. You can skip that one. I don't know if I want to go through this whole toilet presentation, this is another thing that I'm really passionate about, and you're going to see this thing come out here in the next two, three months, you're going to see our new toilet, and it's something I think is really awesome. I think we can, that's probably it. Thank you.
I'd like to ask Peter a question. You obviously got Bill Gates' interest. Do you foresee him as a future partner?
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's, so we're in negotiations right now with the foundations to lay that out, and that's not happening. There's also a phenomenal amount of interest from other, well, from nonprofits, organizations, and others, definitely getting involved, both in the United States and worldwide, so we see a collaboration that's bigger than just with Bill Gates, but obviously, he's the main driver behind it.
Okay, any comments from the elected officials? Okay, we're going to go ahead and adjourn, we'll do it, each entity will do it separately. I would entertain a motion from, I guess you're the only one, actually. Do adjourn. And I second it?
Aye.
Aye. Passed. Oh, I keep forgetting him, I think it's subconscious.
Yeah, Tim has a couple comments, Mike.
Yeah, first off, I'd like to say to our partners, thank you. I think we work well together, and I think there's one partner we're missing, and it's the state of Washington. If the governor's office and their support, and Chris Liu with his refreshing approach, and Sweeney and the staff, this wouldn't have happened. In the past, when we tried to talk to the state, it didn't move forward, and I really want to acknowledge the state and their support.
Thank you.
I agree, again, it's a partnership, and we're all in this together, so Commissioner Reese, move?
I still move.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to close the county commission meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries, we adjourn.
Counsel, I need a motion to adjourn. A motion by Councilmember Galbraith, seconded by Councilmember Kinser, all those in favor stand, we're done. Thank you.